This is the May 19, 2014 meeting of the Revere City Council. All rise and salute the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members. Councilor Arigo is absent. Councilor Gino?
Here.
Here, Councilor Guanasso?
Here.
Here, Councilor Haas?
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito?
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselfsky?
Here.
Here, Councilor Patch?
Here.
Here, Councilor Penta?
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers?
Here.
Here, Councilor Riordan?
Here.
Here, and Council President Zambudo?
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Approval of the journals of the meetings of April 28 and May 5, 2014.
All in favor, all opposed, so voted. At this time, Councilor Haas has a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank the citizens for their kind words, their cards during my recent surgery, and I want to thank them all seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Haas. I just want to take a moment of personal privilege to congratulate our colleague, Councilor Janino, on her graduation from Salem State College, and I also hear that she's soon to attend law school. So we're all excited for her, and I just wanted to put that out there. Madam Clerk.
The Chief of Police, Joseph Cafarelli, will now present awards for recognition of acts of valor and bravery to the various members of the Revere Police Department.
Chief and Mayor. Mr. Mayor. No, Ashley, put...
Okay, there we go. Mr. President, thank you very much. Members of the council, thank you all. And I would like to offer my personal welcome back to Councilor Haas. It's good to see you back in fighting shape there. So, yep. So, this is a program that Chief Cafarelli instituted last year, and I think it's a terrific program. What it is, as you all may know, is it recognizes police officers that have gone above and beyond the call of duty, and that happens more times than I think many of us may actually know or may actually think. But this is an opportunity, once a year, that the chief gets to introduce these acts of valor and acts of bravery to the city council and to our residents. So I'm only going to say congratulations to all of them, and I want to thank them for their hard work. It oftentimes goes very unappreciated by the residents, the work they do day in and day out, traveling in and around the city, throughout our neighborhoods, keeping our residents safe. But they do a tremendous job, and I'm glad to see that the chief is recognizing some of these officers on an ongoing basis for their hard work. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councilors. And now that the city clerk has turned the post around, this is for you, the public. You should recognize and be aware of the officers that serve your city. Of all ranks, I have a captain, lieutenant, sergeant, and patrolman, who have received -- will be receiving awards tonight for lifesaving and for valor. Okay? This is an everyday occurrence that often goes unrecognized. Tonight is my opportunity to recognize those officers, and I want to recognize them in Sergeant Kevin Colonino, Officer Greg Tomorrow, and Officer Daryl LaMonica. Front and center, please. On 5/15/13, Officer LaMonica was conducting traffic enforcement on Broadway when a motorist alerted him to a problem occurring a short distance away. He responded to find a man on the ground unresponsive, not breathing and without a pulse. By that time, Sergeant Colonino had also arrived on scene and began CPR chest compressions. The two officers alerted medical aid and continued to perform CPR, along with Officer Tomorrow, who also arrived on scene to assist. The officer administered CPR for approximately five minutes, and the victim eventually regained a pulse for a short period of time. After a minute, he began to lose his pulse, and officers continued performing CPR until Revere Fire arrived and took over. The victim was stabilized by Cataldo Ambulance, was transported to the hospital. The actions of these three Revere Police Officers undoubtedly saved the victim's life. These officers' actions reflect great credit upon themselves, the Revere Police Department and the City of Revere. Gentlemen. Front and center, please. On May 11, 2009, officers arrived at the Sons of Italy Social Club for a report of an armed robbery with a gun. When officers arrived, they encountered a masked -- they encountered a masked suspect armed with what appeared to be a semi-automatic handgun exiting the club. The suspect ran back into the club upon seeing these officers, but moments later, the suspect again exited the club, but this time he was holding an elderly man hostage at gunpoint. The suspect attempted to make his way through the parking lot, using the hostage as a shield, and threatening the officers with his weapon. Officer Hardigan was the first officer to react when seeing the opportunity, and without regard to his safety, rapidly charged the suspect. Upon seeing Officer Hardigan's actions, Captain Guido and Lieutenant Randall, Officer Tomorrow, Officer Wilson, all rushed the suspect, and within seconds, the suspect was disarmed and placed into custody. These officers' bravery reflects great credit upon themselves, the Revere Police Department and the City of Revere. Thank you. Officer Singer. Front and center, please. On May 3, 2009, Officer Singer responded to Rogan's point for a report of three youngsters stranded on the breakwater just offshore. Officer Singer decided that it was imperative that they -- that he enter the water to effect a rescue. Officer Singer went out and retrieved two young males, age 11 and 13. He assisted them to shore, where they were assisted by another officer. Officer Singer then swam back out to assist a 12-year-old boy who was still in the water. The youngster was struggling due to a waterlogged backpack that was weighing him down. Officer Singer assisted the boy -- assisted this boy too until he was brought to shore. Officer Singer entered 49-degree water and rescued three youths who may have -- who would have drowned if not for his brave actions. This officer's action reflects great credit upon himself, the Revere Police Department and the City of Revere. Thank you. On July 23, 2011, Lieutenant Callahan was en route on Route 1 southbound when he came upon a catastrophic event as it began to unfold. Lieutenant Callahan observed a motor vehicle into a pole in a fuel tanker truck on its side in the median strip. He realized that the truck was spilling fuel all over the road. He immediately began to take control of the situation. He notified emergency units and began requesting assistance, all while shutting down the roadway. While Lieutenant Callahan was attempting to manage the situation, the gasoline from the overturned fuel tanker ignited, and the scene became fully engulfed. Lieutenant Callahan was able to retreat to a safe distance without injury. As emergency equipment arrived on scene, Lieutenant Callahan continued to assist in a significant way and was a valuable asset to responding emergency personnel. If it were not for his quick actions, there would have been further injuries and loss of life. Lieutenant Callahan's brave actions reflect great credit upon himself, the Revere Police Department and the City of Revere. Thank you. Officer Mullin. Front and center, please. On March 21, 2013, units from the Revere Police Department, Revere Fire Department, and Cataldo Ambulance Service were dispatched to the rear of North Gate Shopping Center on a report of a child being mauled by two dogs. As the responders arrived, it was immediately apparent that a young boy was in fact being mauled by two rottweiler dogs inside a lot. The victim was face down and barely conscious as both dogs continued their attack. The scene was horrific, to put it mildly. Officer Michael Mullin exited the cruiser and, aware of the imminent danger, and without hesitation, approached the six-foot-high chain-link fence and immediately began firing rounds from his service weapon at the dogs in an attempt to stop the vicious attack from continuing and prevent further injury and certain death to the young boy. This action caused the dogs to retreat and ultimately stopped the attack on the victim. As the dogs began their retreat, Officer Mullin scaled the chain-link fence, barbed-wire top chain-link fence, and entered the lot in a selfless act of bravery and with complete disregard for his own safety. Officer Mullin exposed himself to danger and raced to the victim, picking him up and carrying him to safety, where he was handed to the firefighters and EMTs, who immediately began lifesaving treatment to further aid the young victim. Officer Mullin then went on to -- went to the 12-year-old friend of the victim who witnessed the attack. Officer Mullin continued to maintain his professionalism, composure, and bearing, while speaking with the young boy, providing support and reassurance that his friend would be all right and was receiving the care he needed. By his undaunted courage, ability to recognize the immediate -- and immediately react to the danger, and devotion to duty, Officer Mullin upheld the highest traditions of the police service, thereby reflecting great credit upon himself as well as the Revere Police Department. Thank you very much. On 5/12/13, at approximately 9:30 PM, the Revere Police received a call regarding a man with a knife attempting to commit suicide on Washington Ave. Dispatch related that the man was cutting himself with the knife and to use extreme caution. Several units responded, as well as the street supervisor. First on scene was Detective Lou LaRosa, who was in the area on an unrelated case. Detective LaRosa encountered the man in the driveway holding a six-inch kitchen knife and notified the responding units that the man was in fact holding a knife and actively cutting himself. The man proceeded toward Detective LaRosa, who created distance between himself and the man while he drew his service weapon and began giving verbal commands consistent with his training and experience. Detective LaRosa then had the presence of mind to key the microphone as he continued to yell to the man to drop the knife, so that responding units kept abreast of the severity of the situation. At that time, Patrolman Greg Tomorrow arrived on scene, and while Detective LaRosa provided cover, Patrolman Tomorrow was able to get close enough to deploy his pepper spray, bringing the man to his knees. At that point, both officers ran to the man, and Patrolman Tomorrow kicked the knife out of his hands while Detective LaRosa held the man down. At that point, Revere Fire and Cataldo were able to provide medical attention to the man. By following Revere Police protocol regarding level of force and drawing on their training and experience, these officers were able to subdue a man without the use of lethal force. These officers' bravery reflects a great credit upon themselves, the Revere Police Department and the City of Revere.
On January 27, 2014, the Revere Police Department dispatched numerous officers to Loomis Street for a report of a man with a gun. Sergeant Nelson, Sergeant Cavino, along with Officers Laurie and Carvaz, had arrived on scene and found a suicidal male party with a handgun. Sergeant Nelson and Cavino immediately established a rapport with the subject at great personal risk to themselves. In an effort to prevent him from harming himself, these officers were unwavering in their focus and dedication. As a matter of point, I responded to this call as well and observed firsthand Officer Cavino and Officer -- I'm sorry, Sergeant Cavino and Sergeant Nelson's actions, and if nothing else, commensurate professionals, to say the least. These officers displayed a compassionate professionalism which should serve as an example of dedication to the community. Sergeant Nelson and Cavino's actions reflect great credit upon themselves and the Revere Police Department and the City of Revere.
On behalf of the Revere Police Department, thank you very much.
Calendar item number one, certificates of commendation will be awarded to the officers
Mr. President. Councilor Penta.
I may see the mayor here, and I'm not sure what he's up here for, but we can take him first.
One minute recess. We'll be right back, I guess.
We'll take a one-minute recess. This council meeting is back in order. Councilor Guanasso, a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. We -- because of the attendance that we had of the police officers earlier, we omitted to send greetings to our colleague, Brian Arigo, who experienced a nasty fall a week ago in his place of work, and he's certainly experiencing a lot of pain, and he's been diagnosed with some serious situation in his back. And we're hoping that he is listening and watching, that we're sending our love to him and his good spirits to him. We'll be in contact with him daily to make sure that he's going in the right direction with his health, and we send him all the prayers and good wishes from, not only from the city council, but from members of our community, each and every one that we speak of and talk about Brian, because he's such a good kid. So, good luck, Brian. We're praying for you to get back here with us. We certainly need you when we go out afterwards to eat, so please, don't leave me with this guy here. So, please, get well quick, and we're praying for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Guanasso. Madam Clerk, do I hear someone who wants to suspend the rules?
Move to suspend.
Calendar item number 11, communication from the mayor relative to the Willabrader-Saugus Inc. trash disposal contract.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you once again for suspending rules so I can get through some of these communications. This one here, as you may have read, has to do with the renewal of our Willabrader contract. That's where all of our disposal, our pickup goes. We talk about pickup and disposal. All of our waste is disposed of at Willabrader. So we have negotiated a contract with them that, as you may see, actually lowers our rates. We have committed to them to a period of nine and a half years with a five-year option. And over time, our rate will remain lower than we're actually paying today until the year 2022. So, you know, in addition to that, they are willing to write a check to the City of Revere for $152,000 as a show of good faith on their end for us signing this extension. So I would recommend, I know you probably have to do some deliberation over it, any contract over three years does require council approval, but this is something that my staff and I, along with our legal team, has worked on, and we feel as though it's a very good deal for the City of Revere to lock ourselves in to a rate, take away that uncertainty that future always brings, and actually lowers our rates. I don't know, I know one of the obvious questions may be, what's that going to do to our disposal rates next year or next year's budget? That's going to have to remain to be seen. We'll certainly do some work on it. But for the time being, safe to say that our rates for disposal will be lower than they are this year, and we could certainly use that $152,000 that Willabrader has committed to the city upon the renewal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ways and Means.
Calendar item number 12, communication from the mayor proclaiming May 17, 2014 is National Kids Parks Day.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, members of the council, this is pretty straightforward. I'm sure you received it in your pack -- package. This is a proclamation that we're doing on behalf of the National Park Trust. It's all geared toward getting families, and in particular, getting children out to the parks and playgrounds, as opposed to sitting in front of their computer screens and iPads, to get them out, get them exercise, get them fresh air. And so, you know, my hope and the hope of the National Park Trust is that the city council will endorse this proclamation and pass it accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What's the will of the council? Okay, motion to approve. All in favor, all opposed, so vote.
Calendar item number 13, communication from the mayor relative to a resolution in support of 32 BJ's Service Employees Union District 615 for the MBTA janitors.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, members of the council, this is a serious resolution that I would like to ask you our support for. Many SEIU members are in attendance here tonight that are very, very concerned about some of the draconian cuts that we believe the MBTA is taking, particularly to those employees who are most vulnerable and actually provide some of the very best services for us here as residents and elected leaders of the city. They're looking to make cuts. A lot of these cuts have to do with the janitorial services that's involved with the MBTA, and as you all know, we have three stations here in the City of Revere. And so, as mayor of the city, and I'm sure you all, as city councilors, were very concerned about the upkeep and the image and the safety and security that these types of services bring to those stations. And so these cuts really, I feel, are very, very inappropriate. I think there's other areas that we could look at if they're truly serious about making cuts. I don't think they should be making cuts to the most vulnerable and to personnel that provides such an important service to the overall operations and upkeep of the MBTA. So I'm asking, and I'm sure there may be some members in attendance that may like to speak, but I'm asking for the city council's support in endorsing this resolution. Thank you very much.
What's the will of the council? Move to approve. Move to approve. Well, we're going to let some of these people speak first. Name and address for the record, please.
Roxanna Rivera, Boston, Massachusetts. My -- I'm the district leader for SEIU 32BJ. We represent contracted janitors that clean throughout the MBTA stations. We have, there's about 300 workers that actually clean throughout the whole MBTA station. The MBTA awarded a new contract for the janitorial services, which implies actually nearly 100 contracted janitors -- oh, I'm sorry. Nearly 100 contracted janitors will be laid off. That's about 30% of the workforce. That will happen as of September 1st. These drastic cuts, particularly during peak hours, will not just undermine the quality of cleaning services, but also will result in an unsustainable workload for those workers who are retained. And this is at the same time that the MBTA has a scheduled fare hike coming up, as well as they have begun operating late-night weekend services. The Blue Line stations in Revere are among the highest impacted by these job cuts. We're talking about a reduction about 67% in hours for cleaning of those stations. So the Revere residents will notice the dirty stations during their daily commutes. We, you know, we want to thank the mayor for putting forth this resolution because we think that these cuts are way too deep, and the burden is going to be way too large for the current workforce to be able to sustain. And we believe it will have public ramifications just because of the type of cleaning that is done at stations is one that is different from what you'd see in an individual building or so. So we thank you again for your consideration of this resolution, and we have one of our members who's a contracted janitor that'd like to speak a moment.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Ivan Correa. He's been a MBTA worker contracted out for 10 years. He lives in East Boston. He lives in East Boston. And we're also concerned because for myself, I have two kids that are about to go into college, and we may be facing layoffs. And the products that the companies give us is not sufficient. I mean, we actually have to clean up vomit and urine and feces on a daily basis, and what they give us is not even enough now. And we thank you for hearing us, and we look forward to your support on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, you want to add something?
Yeah, just very briefly, I just want to add just a little something to that. This is obviously the unit of 32BJ that is being represented here by SEIU. Clearly, there's many more employees that fall under the umbrella of SEIU, and I wish I could quantify, because I know that, you know, we've had members of the union from Boston and East Boston here talking. I can't quantify of these 300 workers that will be impacted, how many actually live in Revere. I don't have that number, but safe to say, there are many SEIU members that do live in Revere and work under the umbrella of SEIU in some capacity, so I just wanted to pass that along.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, on the resolution, all in favor, all opposed, so vote.
Calendar item number 16, communication from the mayor relative to a loan order and resolution for CWSRF Planning Project Number 3908, the amount of $1.2 million for field investigations, illicit discharge detection, and elimination. investigations, illicit discharge detection and elimination, SES Phase 6 investigations, and supplemental CWMP/CSMP services.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, members of the council, our favorite topic. This, again, is in keeping with the city's compliance with our consent decree. As we all know, I don't want to go back and rehash all of the terms and conditions that have been imposed on the city under this consent decree, but these monies will go toward keeping in compliance and actually doing some good work for a system that's been neglected for many, many, many years, unfortunately. As the clerk just alluded to, $1.2 million will be for field investigations, $700,000 will be for specifically the determination of illegal hookups. This will include, you know, house inspections, things like that, that will help take stormwater out of our sewer system. And then $15 million out of an available $19.25 million that's available to the city through the SRF program. We're only asking for $15 million. I know it really probably doesn't seem like I should say we're only asking, but we have $19.25 million available to the city. We're trying the best we can. As some of you may know, I did go down about two or three weeks ago with an attorney that we have retained to help modify the consent decree that we're currently under. I had a chance to meet with the EPA Regional Director Kurt Spalding, along with Senator Warren, Senator Markey, Congresswoman Clark, and Congressman Lynch, who have all pledged their support to the City of Revere in trying to help us modify this consent decree. And this is ongoing. We're providing the necessary documentation and, you know, further information that is going to be required to help us spread this 10-year consent decree out to 20 or 25 years, ideally to take the burden off of the ratepayers. But as it stands right now, this is for work that is going to be done. As I originally said, we have done some tremendous work, and I know that some of you sitting here on the council, maybe all of you sitting on the council, have seen some benefit of the work that the city has done, granted at a cost, but seen the work that has been done that has helped eliminate some of the sewer backups, some of the SSOs, the sanitary sewer overflows, when we used to see the manhole covers popping up in the middle of the street, dumping out raw sewage. We are seeing less and less and less of that. So the money is going toward a very good purpose. And the goal of this modification, by the way, with the DOJ and the EPA, is not to not do the work. We're not trying to get out of doing the work that's required because we do have to do this work. Nobody should have to live in fear of getting sewer backups in their basement or sending their children to a park or playground where sewer has come up out of the ground. So this is work that we have an obligation to fix. I just don't think we need to fix it in 10 years when it took 100 years to get that way. So my hope is that the city council will consider these loan orders, and I'm obviously here to answer any questions, or should you have a subcommittee meeting? I know Councilor Penner is the chairman of the Ways and Means Committee. If he would like me to appear before the committee, I'd be more than happy to.
Councilor Penner.
Thank you, and I'm glad the mayor brought that up. There are a lot of questions, and I'm sure other councils have questions, so I appreciate you coming to the Ways and Means meeting. And I requested probably several weeks ago from CDM an update on what problems are the last four years. I'm just asking if you could call them and get their information that we requested from them a little sooner so we can put this all, incorporate it all together. You know, I don't know how much work they can do in the course of one year, or how much they can sub out, so they already have money, we appropriated it, there's work that's ongoing, and there's a lot of questions that I think has to be asked. There's a lot of money, so I appreciate you coming to Ways and Means meeting, and I appreciate if they're the ones that are requesting this through the city, I'd appreciate if they'd be here. But to make things a little, you know, flawily, I'd like to have all the information we requested before. I know a couple of departments in the city all are gathering that together. A lot of it will come from their company, so if you can just put a call into CDM and ask them if they can send that information, I think this council will have more of a handle than yourself. We were going to go with this, so I appreciate that.
So through you, Mr. President, to Councilor Penner, I'd be more than happy to do that. I talk to CDM Smith almost every single day. I will make sure that they are prepared for your Ways and Means Committee meeting. In fact, if, you know, if I get advance notice, which I always do, maybe we can have our city engineer, Nick Reistrom, and Donnie Goodwin, our Superintendent of Public Works, attend also in case there's some other specific questions that you or members of the committee might have. I think that could be helpful as well.
Mayor, I agree 100%. It's a lot of money, it's a lot of money for the ratepayers, they possibly could pay for this. I know there's grants out there and everything else goes towards this. It's a whole scenario of things, but I think we should air this thing out in front of the public and, you know, let them know where this money's coming from. I mean, unfortunately, it's mandated by the federal government, as you know, we have to do it, but I'd like some answers from CDM. I mean, I know that, like I said, they lost a little credibility with me with the job on Winter Bath, and I'm not happy with it, and I'll state it right here. I mean, it's still going. They started it three weeks ago, said May 9th. I know it's not your issue, but I mean, it's an issue with me and the neighborhood that I'm not losing my credibility over them when they give me their word, but I do have a lot of questions to put forward with them, and that's, I know it has nothing to do with this, we're mandated by the state, but they do have some of the answers that I would like to, so, I mean, I appreciate that, like I said, if I can get the information requested, it might put things a little more to rest with them and stuff like that. So, I mean, all this should be gathered together, Mr. President, and like I said, we'll hold this over until we have the information and have that meeting.
Well, with respect to Winter Bath, I'm not, I'm not going to address that at this meeting, but I will be having and asking for conversation about that at a future meeting in the not-too-distant future. I share the same level of anger and frustration that you have, and let's just say we're exploring a lot of different options right now, and I will be requesting to address the city council in the not-too-distant future to talk.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anybody else on this issue? Okay, this will go to Ways and Means, and we will request CDM, the city engineer, the DPW Commissioner, and several others, anybody that has anything to do with water and sewer will probably be at that meeting. And I share the frustration of Winter Bath, however, I'm not all sure, I'm not sure that it falls all on CDM Smith either.
I'm not suggesting that.
Yeah, I know you're not, but some people are. And we will certainly get that aired out completely so everybody understands the magnitude of a project that's 30 feet down in the ground with high-pressure water, service lines going through there, and all the stuff that goes along with it. And I've been on many jobs such as this with less complications that went a lot worse than this one went. So I know the neighbors are frustrated down there, I get plenty of calls from all of them, but that was a horrendous situation, and it's, thank God, it's coming to an end. Okay, Ways and Means. We'll also order that to a public hearing along with Ways and Means.
Calendar item number 17, communication from the mayor relative to a loan order and resolution for CWSRF Planning Project Number 3909, in the amount of $700,000 for field investigations related to determination of illicit sewer connections and sub pumps, including required house-to-house inspections.
I think that we just included that with the last one. Did we, we're going to order that to a public hearing? Okay, public hearing.
And calendar item number 18, communication from the mayor relative to a loan order and resolution for CWSRF Construction Project Number 3910, in the amount of $15 million for construction of stormwater and wastewater collection systems capital improvements.
Public hearing. And all of those are going to Ways and Means, obviously. Regular order of business.
Calendar item number 2, hearing called is ordered upon the application of Four Kids Only After School Inc. seeking permission to raise and reconstruct a non-conforming structure for the operation of an after-school program in the GB District at 85 Broadway, Revere, Mass.
Proponents, people in favor? Name and address for the record, please.
Okay. Back in May of last, May of 2013, our application for a special permit was granted. At that point in time, we were presenting to the council, in addition to the existing building at 85 Broadway, which is located down on the southern end of Broadway, down by the Chelsea Line, for an after-school program. Over the past year, over the past year, I should say, the matter was further studied by structural engineers who opined that it would be more cost-effective to raise the entire structure and build up in the same footprint, the same design that we had previously presented. It's just more cost-effective, and it also presents a win-win, not only for us, but, I mean, for the City of Revere too, in that you'd be getting a brand-new building at that site. The building that's currently there is built in 1950, somewhere around 1950. It's aged. To put a second floor on there, as they say, is more costly. It's going to require structural supports to be constructed in there to put the second story on there. So, again, we just thought it would, it just seemed to make sense to come back before you and ask you to consider our request once again for a special permit, as this building is a non-conforming structure, the existing building that sits there now is a non-conforming structure. I do have people here who could speak further about the construction of the building that we're now proposing. Again, having been before you a year ago, I'm not quite sure how much information you'd want, but I'm telling you, this isn't a game of smoke and mirrors in any way. It's simply an opportunity for the applicant to save money and the City of Revere to get a new facility, a new building, as opposed to having that structure, the existing structure there with the brand-new second-floor addition on top of it. I also wanted to note, last year, before you, there was discussion about payment in lieu of taxes. I want you to know the applicant has honored its payment this year. Payment was made back in March. I only say that because there was some discussion about it in the past, and I know that that's not part of the application, but we just simply want to be open, clear, and transparent with the city. We said before, we want to be good neighbors, and we intend to be.
Thank you very much. Any other proponents, people in favor, want to say anything about this?
I do have, if you may recall, last year, we submitted books that sort of explained what it is that we're doing, be happy to.
And to the clerk, please.
Mr. Chairman, if you have any questions about the application?
We have to go through the public hearing first, opponents and proponents and opponents, and then councilors, and then the councilors will probably have some questions for you. And this obviously will end up in a committee, either Economic Development or zoning, or both, maybe. Okay, any other proponents, people in favor? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Any opponents, people opposed to this proposal? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Councilors, Councilor Penner.
Thank you, Mr. President. It happens to be in my ward. I talked to Community Development on this, and they assured me that the same footprint is going to be there if they remodeled it or if they do it new. And sometimes, you know, to reinforce something, to build a second story on it, does cost more money. We vetted this thing, I think, for how many months before, but if you voted for this before, I mean, I can't say you'd be against it because there's a new building opposed to a rehab of a building, so I'm not going to belabor this thing any more than that, so I'm in favor of 100%. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Penner. Councilor Janino.
Thank you. I supported this project a year ago, and I'll support it again. They've been operating across from City Hall, and they fit right into our community and have done a great job working with the youth in our community. And the property we're looking at is really a gateway to the city coming out of Chelsea, so if we can get the newest, best building there, I think we owe it to our city and to the children of the city, so they have my support 100%. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Janino. Councilor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Fellow that just addressed the council, attorney. You mentioned payment in lieu of taxes. Can you tell me in this council what that amount is?
If I can stop you for a second, that's absolutely not part of any special permit. That's a separate, completely separate from whether or not they get this special.
I understand.
Okay, I just want to make that clear on the record. This has nothing to do with the permit.
I understand that, but it may have to do with my support. Sir, can you tell me what they're paying now in lieu of taxes?
This past year, fiscal year 2014, if I may just have one moment?
Yeah. Okay, is that going to increase or decrease with the new building? I would suspect it might increase with the new construction.
But I guess it all depends on what the assessed value of the building would be.
Yeah, well, where it's a new building, I would think the assessed value would probably go up, correct?
Mr. President, point of information.
State your point, Counselor.
This here, it's a development that actually could come to the city and say, we're not going to pay anything because it's exempt from taxes.
I think we're going to have to leave this alone.
But we made a deal with the building that's in the footprint, so I don't see how it's relevant.
It is not, and I'm going to, I'm going to stop this line of questioning. Let's forget, let's forget the in lieu of taxes. It has nothing to do with this hearing. It's on the merit of the building. Whether your taxes go down or up, doesn't, the assessment, whatever happens, doesn't have anything to do with this. I assume that it's the same footprint, the building's going to be pretty much the same. I don't see a lot of changes here, but that's irrelevant.
I think the question I was asking, Mr. President, was, is that amount going to continue? Simple question.
We have any intention to continue our good faith with the City of Revere.
That was my question. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilor Powers. Councilor Haas, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last year, I was for this project, coming before us again this evening, looking about raising the building, bring a, put a brand-new facility in there. I think it's absolutely tremendous for the youth of the community and for the organization, so I would be 100% for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Haas. Councilor Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. Certainly, I voted for it in the past, and the need is there for this type of activity in our community, and who's to argue with someone who wants to tear down a structure and build something brand-new? I mean, because I just took another glance at the site that's there now, I mean, that isn't a very sightly thing to begin with. We were looking forward to it being refurbished, so what would almost be moot in my mind is why we voted against this, your request this evening. And, sir, you present yourself well. I really admire an attorney that comes forward and speaks very, very level with individuals. I admire your approach, and you certainly have a wonderful applicant to represent, but you do a good job, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Guanasso. I'm certainly going to support this, what I call a change to the other special permit, but of course, it's a new special. the other special permit, but of course, it's a new special permit, and, uh, I think it's gonna be a much better project for it, and, uh, the only, uh, I know you're across the street from City Hall right now, and I have received a lot of complaints about the buses, and I'm hoping that we're gonna have a better situation when the new building is up, that we're not gonna be blocking Broadway with these buses. So, so we're looking forward to your new building, and, um, if there's no other, uh, no other counselors that wanna speak, we're gonna, uh, send this, I think to Economic Development.
Zoning.
And zoning. Joint Committee. Uh, can I have suspension of rules here? All in favor, all opposed? Uh, Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number eight, communication from the Chief of Police relative to the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program.
Chief.
Good evening, Council President, members of the council. The purpose of this communication is, uh, a requirement of the Department of Justice with respect to transparency for the intent of the, the grant that we're applying for. The Riviera Police Department is requesting funds from the Bureau of Justice Assistance, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program, local solicit, solicitation to maintain a part-time community resource coordinator to purchase community outreach educational materials and shirts for the Citizens Police Academy applicants. Specifically, the department is requesting $22,843. This part-time coordinator position will be on a consultant basis with no benefits, approximately 18 hours a week, at $21 an hour for 52 weeks. The total cost of this position will be $19,656. In addition, the department will purchase a total of $12,812 in education materials, including neighborhood crosswalk signs, business crime-watch signs, crime-watch home and business decals, crime handbooks, and community policing emergency numbers, Secure Your Home projects against identity theft magnets, uh, for seniors, at a total cost of $2,812. Additionally, the department will purchase approximately 25 polo shirts at an estimate cost of $15 per shirt for the participants of the Riviera Police Department Citizens Police Academy. The total cost for this expense will be $375. This is fully funded through the Department of Justice. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, Counselor Janino.
Thank you. I just wanted to, um, support this motion. My grandmother just completed the Citizens Police Academy, and she said it is one of the most rewarding experiences that she's had in the city, and she talks about it every single day, about how much she loves it and how happy she is, so if we can give that to our residents in our community and educate them-
She's a top shooter. We're gonna make her a sniper.
Thank you. So, it, you know, when you see the joy it can bring to one person, I think it's something that is an asset to our community, and I hope to see it continue, so thank you so much for bringing this before us.
Thank you, Counselor Janino. Counselor Penta.
Just very quick, Mr. President, I just want to, um, thank you for the job you're doing through the citizens of Riviera. You're doing a great job, you know, keep it up, and, you know, it wasn't an easy job you took on and stuff like that, but I wanna commend you. Um, I got nothing but positive things out of the police department, and you can see tonight what you, what you did for your morale and everything else, I wanna just thank you for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel. When they have a lot of good men and women in the police department, it's easy. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Counselor Penta. I just wanna say that I took the Citizens Police Academy, I think about 15 years ago. Uh, maybe I need a refresher course, but-
Do me both.
It certainly is a, uh, certainly is a worthwhile program, and it, uh, it educates the citizens as to what you do, and, and, along with, uh, bringing up the officers tonight to, to honor them for their bravery and valor, and, uh, you know, we're quick to, we're quick to, uh, see negative stuff in the newspaper, God forbid, when someone goes astray, uh, but very rarely do we hear of the, uh, the heroic things that are done on a daily basis, really, by the department, and, uh, you ought to be commended for, for leading this department, and the officers are to be commended for showing up and doing the job on a regular basis. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, is that, do we need a motion for this?
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept, okay. Packs for regular order of business.
Calendar item number three, hearing called is ordered upon the petition presented by National Grid for pole locations on Hillside Avenue and Riviera Beach Parkway.
Proponents, people in favor, name and address for the record.
My name is Michael Manidis, representing National Grid at, uh, 170 Medford Street in Malden. Uh, this, uh, pole location for, uh, Hillside Ave is to bring a 13 KB, uh, circuit to, um, the property at 473 Riviera Beach Parkway for a new apartment building that is going up in that location.
Is that everything?
Uh, well, the reason we're coming from, I mean, I don't know if you guys have the, uh, sketch in front of you, the reason we're coming from this pole rather than pole 30, which does seem to be closer, is, um, the 13 KB circuit is the only one that can handle this load. The four, there's a 4 KB circuit on that pole line as well that runs to pole 30. The 13 KB circuit actually runs south, um, so it doesn't continue down, um, Riviera Beach Parkway. So, we, that's why we're proposing this pole to, um, to, uh, serve this-
In other words, this is the better way to do it, and that's why it's proposed that way?
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any, any other proponents, people in favor of this, uh, request? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents, people opposed to this, uh, pole request? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any city counselor, Counsel Novosolsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, um, I, I just got to look at this over the weekend, so I knew they were coming in with it, but, uh, there was a, I know all the neighbors, which one is here tonight, uh, got letters on it, you know, they were left, put up in the air as far as where things were going. Uh, I'm just concerned, 'cause there's a bus stop right at that location, and how, whether or not the MBTA was notified of this was gonna happen at this location.
Um, I, I'm actually, I'm not sure. I was told that the, um, I was told that the, the property here where the pole is going was city-owned. I wasn't aware that there was a bus station at that location, but something-
Yeah, we, we, right, we, we've assigned a bus stop there-
Okay.
For approximately 100 feet from the corner, from the corner of Hillside and the Riviera Beach Parkway.
Okay.
So, I just wanna make sure that that doesn't interfere with the people coming on and off the, the buses.
Uh, no, I mean, the, the, the pole definitely, and, I mean, the construction won't take any more than a day. It's not, it's not a big-
Well, I, I'm not concerned about that, I just wanna make sure that the pole doesn't come where the bus usually-
Oh, no.
Where, where the entrance would be-
Right.
You know, the, coming on and off the bus.
I understand that won't be-
Okay, do we know the distance from the corner back to the existing location?
From the-
Corner of Hillside.
Uh-huh. To, to where-
To where the, yeah, proposed location is.
Um, I know it's about 130 feet to the, to the other pole that's going on at the, uh, at, uh, 473. I'm not exactly sure how far to the, to the corner of-
What's the longest you can do a run?
Um, it's about 150 feet.
150. So, if you had, if you had to move that another couple feet, uh, 10, 20 feet, you could, back away from the bus stop?
Yes.
Would you consider that if, to make sure that the, the people can get on and off properly?
Yeah. Yeah, we can, we can go and, uh, restake it if we need to.
If you would, appreciate it. You know, I understand why it has to go in, so, um, but I just wanna make sure that the people are not interfered with, so.
Right, yep.
Appreciate it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank, thank you. Uh, any other counselors? All right. Yeah, let, let me just say this. Uh, we're gonna approve this tonight. Uh, can we do a field visit and make sure that the, the counselor is satisfied that, excuse me, you're not gonna, uh, encroach on the bus stop in, in any way, and that we can make whatever modifications are required?
Yeah.
We're gonna approve it with that kinda provision, okay? All right. On the, excuse me, on the pole request, all in favor, all opposed, or do we need a roll call for this? All in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number four, hearing called is ordered upon the application presented by National Grid for the installation of conduits on Park Avenue at Harry Delarussue Stadium.
Again, name and address for the record.
Uh, Michael Manidis from National Grid, 170 Medford Street, Malden, Mass. Uh, this is for, uh, the new, um, stadium that's going in for the, uh, uh, elementary school on Park Ave. These three underground service, um, wires will be used to serve the concession building, the stands, and the team room building as well.
Okay. Any other, uh, proponents? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents, people opposed to the electricity for our new stadium? Hearing and seeing none, close that side of the hearing. Any counselors? None. Okay, on the request, all in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Thank you very much.
Calendar item number five, revocation hearing called is ordered relative to the special permit previously granted for the premises located at 765 Riviera Beach Parkway.
Mr. Sipoleta.
Mr. President, Honorable Members, James Sipoleta, 385 Broadway, Riviera. Uh, here with, uh, Vicky, um, Vanoker, who is the principal, uh, one of the principals in the Adult Day Healthcare Center. At the command of the, uh, city council, we're here to answer questions and show cause why the special permit should not be revoked.
Counselor Penta. Wait a minute, is this a public hearing? Okay. Uh, any other proponents to the-
We're actually opponents.
And, and any proponents of, of, of keeping, I guess we have proponents to keep the special permit, and any other proponents that wish to keep the special permit in the audience?
I believe there are, Mr. President.
Okay. Name and address for the record.
My name is Paul Lucero. That'll be 39 Jarvis Street, this city. Um, when I work, uh, this place is called the Riviera Adult Day Healthcare Center. It's been open there for two years, and that's exactly what it is. It's a day, it's an adult day healthcare center. Most of the people that go there are already on the downside of the hill. They're already, this place provides for them health, they maintain their health, they help them out, they, they monitor them, uh, with their, uh, blood checks, they have nurses on staff there. Nutritionally, they provide probably for some of these people, and it's sad, and they're elderly, one of the nutrition, uh, probably one of the only nutritional meals that they have for the day. Some of them don't eat all their food, because they sneak some home, because that's what it is in their life. This place provides that for them. Also provides some place for, uh, excuse me, I'm a little, uh, a little emotional about this. They, they give them knowledge on financial, financially what they, what they need to watch for. Any changes in the insurance, any changes with the federal government, any changes that happen may become in their way that they may not understand. Also, this place provides them a, a place to feel safe. It gives them a place of community. And like I said, if these people are, they're vulnerable, they're vulnerable and mostly because of their age. I know there's some problems there, but most of the people here are over 60. Most of them can't even ambulate properly. They need wheelchairs, they are brought in, most of them don't even drive there. I'm not, uh, I'm asking that this, um, that if this place has trouble keeping being open, that I am opposed for anything for it to be closed, shut down, or anything taken away from them. Like I said, most of these people here are already on a downhill. They're already on the other side of the hill, they're waiting in a pasture, and I've already lost a few friends there, and I've only known this place for about a year and a half to two years now. I've met some friends there, Maria, she passed away last year. She was one of my friends. I would go visit her on my breaks, on my lunch. I even go there on a Saturday to go visit some of them. Alls they want, the people there just need to be is me to feel comfortable, safe, and most of them have a sense of community at this place. And for them, it's very important, and for the workers there, it's very important. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Name and address for the record, please.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Lori Turner. Um, I'm a resident of Chelsea, but I do work at the Riviera Adult Day Health Center. Um, I am a practicing, I'm the clinical director, um, a registered nurse for 33 years in practice. Um, one of the things, before I get started, I'd like to take a moment just to thank you all and the mayor for your recent proclamation, um, which was for National Nurses Day and National Nurses Week, May 6th through May 12th, that, in that proclamation, um, it was addressed with changes in healthcare and the needs that we have, not only in Riviera, but nationally. Because of the technologies and people living longer and sustaining life longer, um, we have a void in our system right now. So, there is a piece that's missing that the Adult Day Health Center does provide. One of the biggest goals that, um, is offered through Adult Day Health, um, is to keep our resident, our participants at home in their community. Most of our clients, um, if they did not come to the center to receive assistance with healthcare, um, education, supportive case management, making appointments, um, and most importantly, the socialization factor, um, would find themselves, they don't have anyone at home to do those things for them. They would end up moving into other aspects of healthcare, which would be potentially assisted living and nursing homes. Unfortunately, um, my experience after 33 years shows that as long as we can keep people at home in their community functioning to the highest optimum level, the better off they do. Once they transfer into this higher level of care, whether it be nursing home or assisted living, it's a downward slide from there. They're more dependent, they have more co-mobilities that, um, exacerbate in those environments. So, what I'd like to just say is that we provide a vital, um, service to the community, not only to Riviera, but surrounding communities, um, and, um, we need to continue to operate to do that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Edward Thompson, 23 Kimble Road, Chelsea, Mass. I've been going to the Health Center for almost two years. They helped me with a lot of stuff. I haven't had a drink in two years. They take me to my AA meetings, they bring me back, they take me to my hospital appointments. That, I've been with my sister for seven years, but they helped me get housing. I don't know, if they, they close that place down, I don't know what I'd do, because basically, I was in and out the hospital for depression, but I go there on a regular basis. I'm not depressed no more. I'm not thinking about drinking. I have a good time there. I'm even learning some experiences. Yeah, that's, that's a real good place, and I hope they, I hope it stays open. Thank you.
Thank you for your input, sir. Any other proponents? Name and address for the record, please.
My father at, uh, coming at the center, not every day in this moment, but he's so sick, uh, a few, a few months ago. But these people is so beautiful, beautiful help, beautiful, and they attended for the elder, and, uh, everybody is so happy. I don't understand it around here, and I live in a, one month, I, in a few days, I live around the center. In my case, I drive for my father. In my case, I can't drive in the same way too. It's impossible. It's impossible. I need take around Riviera for, uh, stay in the center. This is a explain about the, I can use the same way, you know? And the, in my case, I appreciate all help for all older people, and I work for the people from my church too, and every week. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Angel Maryburn. I'm a resident of the city of Riviera. I moved to, into the city five years ago, and actually- I moved to, into the city five years ago, and actually, a month ago, I got my mother, 82 years old, and she has some kind of Alzheimer. And I've been looking for a place for my mother for, for the last, for the last, actually, two months, and I couldn't find a good place that I can, you know, trust that my mother's gonna be, you know, good. So I found a place in Methfor, so I, but if I'm living in Revere, so what I gotta take my mother to Methfor, so, and I, I saw in this place, you know, the right place for my mother, and I understand how came, there are some people, they can, they wanna close this place for people even, you know, the last days. So that's the reason I'm here, to support this place, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna keep you busy, that's what the reason that I'm here. I'm so really mad, how came, you know, people can't close this place? That's all I wanna say.
Thank you for your input, sir. Okay.
Mr. President, finally, if I may give the...
You're gonna give the summation to this, sir?
The summation on behalf of my client, and we were fortunate enough to appear before the City Council a few years ago with the initial special permit application, and the City Council saw fit 11 to nothing, I believe, to issue that special permit, because the City Council in its wisdom saw the need for a place like this, where, where people live longer, they need more on the back end of life, and as one of the speakers who preceded me said, that, you know, this is a vulnerable population who needs to be kept at home, and this is one of the crutches that those people lean on to be able to stay, live in their own homes, and be around whatever family they have left. Because of the growth in the aging population, the services that the center provides are being funded by state and federal funds, expanded, and as Vicky said when we were here a couple weeks ago, you know, this is not some place where they solicit, like a business would, for certain patrons to come in. They take referrals from Mass General and Chelsea, I think Chelsea Hebrew, and a number of those other places that, medical facilities that Vicky spoke of and we're all familiar with, and many of those people get driven either by the tee, you know, the ride, by the referring agency, or by family members, and we do realize that, you know, the front part of the business which fronts on Revere Beach Parkway isn't a residential area, but we're very keenly aware that behind it is. And over the years, we've had significant discussions with individual council members who receive telephone calls from residents there who are not necessarily enthusiastic about a UPS truck, or the ride, or the van from, you know, Grede Lynn Senior Health Center, whoever it is, that might come down the, down the street. And we realize, and Vicky and her staff have done what, what they can to try to moderate and control this. We're aware of what the conditions are, and we're willing to live with them, and to the extent that a non-governmental agency, a private entity, attempts to control the behavior of third parties over whom they don't have supervision, is very difficult, but they try the best they can. When we were made aware during the last special permit hearing and indeed the zoning subcommittee meeting of some things that we needed to do in compliance with the conditions of this amended special permit, which covers the expansion of the building and the, the activity, Vicky sent out certified letters to everybody on the abutters list, introducing herself and the staff at, at the healthcare center, and to engage those people in a dialogue, say, in essence, you know, if there's something that we can do to work together, or if there's some problem that we, you have, we don't know about, or if there's a problem that we both recognize exists, the way going forward to do this is, is to do it in unison. What she also did in conjunction with, and in compliance with the terms and conditions of the special permit, and I, I entered this into the record as an exhibit on last week, so you should have all of this, letters to all of the vendors, whether they're transportation companies, referring, medical agencies, and the like, telling them and reminding them of the special permit conditions that must be complied with. Likewise, she has reduced to writing the commitment of all of her employees to comply with the enumerated conditions, and those conditions are set out in the contract that each of the employees was asked to sign, and that's an exhibit for this evening's hearing as well. One thing that we might not have had immediate and total control over was logistics and timing. We were all, we were only here, you know, several weeks ago, and the City Council voted to grant the special permit with conditions, and of course, there's that 21-day appeal period after the filing with the City Clerk's office. Somewhere, either within or just after the running of the appeal period, we got notice that there was going to be a, a hearing to revoke the special permit. So in essence, what we were allowed to do, or given permission to pursue by virtue of the second, the most recent special permit, hadn't yet begun. And so until, and there were some conditions precedent to our being able to obtain a building permit, and, and some of those things just couldn't be done. Number one, we were within the appeals period, and so we couldn't get a building permit. And, and secondly, these things get timed out as, as the building is expanded and the parking lot is reconfigured, and the drop-off and the pickup areas are repositioned to accommodate the new, new construction. So that really didn't get a chance to kick in before we got the word that the council pulled the trigger on the, on the hearing. And, and that's well and good, but I, I think that needs to be understood in the context of, you know, just the logistics of how this rolls out. But nonetheless, what, what Vicky has done as well with those individuals who may drop off relatives and friends, the, the ride, the people who, the other referring agencies, is to, the plan is to use that front entrance way, and there are pictures in the, in the exhibits that are here too, of people getting out of the vans from the third-party medical provider, providers, and referring agencies, and using that front. And that's going to be expanded, and that's what's going to, what is planned to be the drop-off access and egress. But until such time as that all happens, she's closed, she's closing that side Mill Street entrance and exit, and just closing it off. So the delivery and the pickups will happen actually not in the front until it's done, but around the rear of the building, away from all of the activity. So I, I need to commend her, at least in that regard, to being responsive to the council's concerns and those sensitivities of the neighbors to the activities of, again, third parties over whom she really doesn't have any control. And when I was speaking with this gentleman earlier, the first speaker, before we came up here, and I thought he might have remembered to relate one of the incidents that, that occurred at the, at the center, where it was either he or someone had dropped, had, had parked on the side of the building and went inside to do something with one of the participants there and a neighbor, or some, somebody not associated with the, with the center came over and he said, "Well, you know, you can't park there, I'm gonna call the cops and have the car towed." And the responses, response was, "Well, would you like me to get the police officer who drove that car, police car here and see if he's gonna have it towed?" I mean, it, it gets to a point where, you know, enforcement is great, but saturation sometimes gets to be a little much. And what I can say without having, you know, and I think these speakers, these people who spoke ahead of us, just, they did a great job, you know? They did it better, they could, they said it better than, than I could say it. So I would, I would just, you know, want to reiterate to the council how important this place is to the older people.
I think, Mr. Turner, we have your, we've, we've got the gist of this whole thing. We know, we know that this service is a needed service. I, I know I'm going off script here and going off the public hearing, but I don't think there's a question as to whether the service is needed. It's a question as to whether they're gonna be able to accommodate the needs of the neighborhood, and I think that this, you've, you've presented your case that you're certainly trying to do that. So now we're gonna go on and continue this, so we don't keep, we know, we know it provides a service. We wanna see it provide the service in a way that everybody can accept and, and be happy with. So we're gonna close this side of the hearing, and I don't even know if I'm calling for opponents or proponents now, but I'm calling for the, the other side of this case. Anybody opposed to keeping the permit in place, I guess, would be what I'm looking for. And I'm hearing and seeing none of them. I'm gonna open this up to City Counselor. Counselor Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I think I've heard this, it's like Groundhog Day, over and over and over again. There's no one more sensitive to senior citizens than the adult daycare centers. But you know, this is not the only one in the state, it's not the only one in the, and in the vicinity of this, there's, there's several of these. But we've had this, the administrators is building, the owner is building up here, I don't know how many different times, you know, and there's no question, is there a need for this? Yes. But there's also, you know, when you come up here, and we put conditions in, all due respect to the council, I think it's more than six or eight weeks ago, that we gave the additional permit out. So the 21 days was well, well over that, and I make calls on this, knowing that neighbors call me on a daily basis. At 8:30 in the morning, I have one gentleman call me up, sit in my yacht, it's a caravan coming down here. I said, "I can't believe this. We just did this two weeks ago." You would think, you would think, and how easy is this, to go outside when a van pulls up and say, "Look, you're not allowed to come this way." If you're coming from Chelsea, the parkway is the easiest and quickest way to get there. So it's not like they're going out of their way and down streets and that, but you know something? If you have to, had to do that, all along, it's good. But my consideration is, there has been no reconsider, no consideration with the neighborhood down there. Just tonight, I was in a clerk's office, and I said, "Let me call one of the neighbors that called me, see when the last time they had vans." Because I've had several neighbors call me, and I got a letter in the mail, and they said, "These people serious? They send a letter to talk to the neighborhood now? I mean, after, after how many hours they spent in front of the council?" And I told them to stay home because I'm dead against this. Because we gave you chance after chance after chance. To me, it was a slap in my face, the council, this whole council, that they weren't stopped immediately that day. You're talking four to six weeks ago. The gentleman told me, "You kidding me? Just wanted to go by here." He's, "You gotta be, I mean, I, he's, "Why are you asking me to kid you?" I says, "Oh, I believe you." But I cannot believe, knowing they're coming out in front of the council, they haven't straightened this out yet. I have the woman on, on Tav Street that calls me, and it's been an ongoing issue for three or four years. So the people come up here for two years, this is not just the first time we've had problems. I get the phone calls. I have four, four people that call me on a consistent basis just off of Mill Street. Tav Street have a couple more when they pick up the trash at 4:30, 5:30 in the morning. Last time I went to meeting, I brought that up, the woman calls me a week later. I cannot believe, I thought you, I watched the council meeting, "Don't they, don't they hear what you say?" I says, "Evidently, they don't hear what I say." I'm the one to put, to, to put this on the thing. Because how many times do I need neighbors calling me and calling me? They're not running a good business as far as the neighborhood's concerned. As far as taking care of the people, and I hope they're doing a great job. I don't know that firsthand, I just know that they gave this council slap in the face for me for the last time. And, you know, how, I, I just couldn't believe, and I still can't believe that today the vans went by there. It's amazing that they had the audacity to go by and to say that you can't control a third party that does business at your site. That's ludicrous. Because I know if I'm getting shut down, I would do everything in my power, I wouldn't take the person in my, what do you call, if they couldn't control the people that's taken. Now, as far as these people, if they had to be relocated or whatever, the addition, and you said it in front of us over here, the addition of people, there is no addition of people, it's just making it more convenient for them with the addition. That's what we're told here, at least that's what I was told when they go on the tapes. So it's not, it's not really about shutting them down, but I mean, I cannot believe the strong message this council sent the last time. You know, and all the speakers here that come up here, I live with neighbors that have lived there for years and generations, two, three generations, that are tired of seeing yellow buses, van buses, vans, caravans on, 8:30 in the morning, you must open at 8:30 because that's, he told me, come up a quarter past 7:00, and you're gonna see them. And he's not the only one that calls me. I mean, I actually told him to stay home, and the gentleman actually called tonight, I mean, feel bad as his brother passed away, but he did tell me to, "We're there, and if I wanna come up in the morning, I can sit in his yacht tomorrow morning." But I take their word for it. But this is not, I mean, adult daycare is, like, these people, they need the service, I understand that. And last time, the last time, we okayed this, because I think every council up here was gonna vote against it, that was on this council before, and because of those people, we gave it another chance. Because of those people need the service and everything else. And then this council, I mean, I, I still, I was amazed that they could not control people getting dropped off at their site. To me, that's, that's just an excuse, you can't control third parties. But I am gonna stick with my renovation of the place because I, I mean, I just can't keep going through this, because we've been here, I don't know how many times, and we were told the same thing, a story, a story, a story. And that's why I'm, I'm amazed, I am totally amazed, I get more calls on this site than I have over the last three or four years, than I do on every issue put together. So if you don't think that the frustration of the people down there is overwhelming what they see, and they came up here, and they heard it, and they said, "Okay," they gave them a chance, but you know, and all of a sudden, the traffic's going by there. But to me, it, it, it doesn't make sense just to go around the parkway, and I'm sticking to my, to my thing that I'm not, I'm in favor of pulling out a permit. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Penta. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I'm one who has always supported the neighborhoods. However, I, I look at the, you know, the things that were requested, and I'd like to ask the, you're the manager there, or, would you please come up to the podium?
Name and address for the record, please.
Victoria Vinicor, 4008 Fox Valley Drive, Rockville, Maryland.
Okay. Has the parking lot been striped down there as has been requested?
Well, since I was here last time, we had to have the architect do the drawings. That was number one. And the second thing, we were hiring this site company that were supposed to do the site planning, because we don't have the actual plans of the parking. So that's what our architect is working on.
How long is that? How long you anticipate that will take?
We're done, I think. We're done with the inside plans, and that's why it took us a little bit of time, because we had to have everything ready to apply for the permit to get the construction going. That's why we had to retain a kind, an architect, a licensed architect, who came in to do the study. And once we take over this space, our plan is to actually not use Mills, not that we did use Mill Street before after this, but we will not be even getting on Mill Street with the other entrance, because we would use completely different entrance from the other side where most of the parking lot is. That's what our goal is.
Okay, let me, let me just say this to you. I would imagine that most of the drop-offs there are transportation vendors, is that correct? People that provide transportation at a, at a cost, right?
Right. Well, we have a couple of vendors that are state vendors, and what happened is, they send different van, different drivers every day. So we made a notice to them, we send letters, we have actually... So we made a notice to them, we send letters, we have actually sign outside of the park, outside.
But they're licensed vendors, is that correct?
Yes, yes, of course.
And in your trash pickup, I mean, I can't possibly imagine why your organization can't contact your trash company and say, look, we, either we're going to get somebody else or you're going to pick it up, not when you want, when we tell you we want it picked up, so it is convenient for the neighborhood down there.
We did, we did know about this. We honestly didn't know that the trash companies was picking up. We got a part, we got a ticket, our landlord actually got a ticket, that we were not aware. He called us and he told us about it. And the next day, we called the company, and we made them aware, and we asked them not to do it in the morning. That was something that brought up to me two weeks ago, for the first time.
Well, let me say-
And we immediately called them, and we immediately asked them not to do any more pickups in 4:00 in the morning.
Let me say this to you, I, I can sympathize with the residents down there. I would suggest to you that you make sure, starting tomorrow, that your trash is picked up at a reasonable time.
Okay.
I would make sure that you get your plans from your architect, and that that, those properties are striped accordingly. And you would also notify your vendors that supply transportation, and your vendors that supply different items to your facility, that they do it from the parkway. There's no reason why they have to come down those neighborhood streets, none whatsoever. I, I will vote not to rescind your license, because I am very grateful that I get up every morning, and I have my faculties, and I'm not in a facility like that, or not dependent on a facility like that. Because I've been to several facilities that are operated by the state, and I, and I know there are people with difficult problems there, and my heart goes out to them. But again, this time, I will vote not to suspend your license, when it comes for a vote, but I'm putting you on notice, as far as my vote is concerned, that those three items, striping the parking lot, making sure that they're not coming down those neighborhood streets, and also adjusting your trash, trash pickup, and making sure that it's adhered to. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. I'll definitely make sure we address that.
Thank you, Counsel Powers. Before I go on, let me just put out as a point of information, I'm going to let everybody speak, and, and the special permit has not been yet issued. They can't get a building permit, they can't even do the striping yet. So there, we are a bit premature on this, but I'm glad that we're having this hearing, because we're getting everything out on the table, and the next time this happens, after the permit is issued, then I'm not going to be friendly, I'm going to be a hatchet man. So we're going to get all this on the table, I hope you're listening well, taking notes. We want these things adhered to, and, and there's not going to be any excuses after the period of time that you actually have the permit, and you actually have a chance to get all these things in position. You're not going to be able to come up here and say, we tried, the vendors won't listen. Any of that stuff won't work later. Okay, Counsel Riordan.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll try to be as brief as possible. I agree with you, this measure is premature at this point, although I would suggest that we table it, rather than vote on it this evening. Because at this point, I believe that the permit will be issued, and then the question is whether later on down the road, is it going to be revoked. You're taking the opportunity, and during the expense of doing all this construction, I assume that will be some sort of an impetus to follow the, what I consider to be the most egregious issue, which is the traffic issue. Obviously, and I agree with Attorney Sipoletta, as far as individuals are concerned, coming down Mill Street, going around the corner and accessing the front of the building off of Parkway, I don't think there's a lot that we can do about it. I think we would be putting too much of an onerous condition on you to allow individuals, prevent individuals from accessing from Mill Street. But as far as the vendors are concerned, and the people that, that you have contracted with, or contract with other agencies to come, they should be put on notice that they have to come down Revere Beach Parkway to access the building. And we, we understand, at least I understand, that there will be new drivers who foolishly violate this, but we would also like to know what you're doing to prevent that from happening, and make sure that you, when you have a driver that comes in and didn't come the right way, you say to him, look, and you contacted the vendor, and you say, this can't happen again. At least, put yourself in a position that's defensible. Send them a letter. Show us the letter when we have questions about that. At this point, however, though, I agree with the council president, this is way premature, although the traffic issue is, is important. I'm going to ask you one question about that Mill Street side of the access point. Is it your intention to fence off that Mill Street side of the property, so that vehicles can't actually roll into the lot from a Mill Street access?
We're planning to close, so actually, what's going to happen, no parking, no vans are going to park on that side, no patients are going to enter from that entrance. We're only going to use the other side of the building.
My question is not that. My question is whether or not you're going to fence it along Mill Street, to make it impossible to access the property from Mill Street, without having to go around the corner onto the Revere Beach Parkway. Because that in and of itself would prevent people from accessing it, because it's so difficult to do that. And my suggestion is that you prevent any possibility of accessing that property from Mill Street at all, unless the person at least first turns onto Revere Beach Parkway. That seems to me will have kind of a deterrent effect on people actually coming out of Mill Street, because if you try to get on Revere Beach Parkway, coming out of Mill Street at that point, believe me, I know, you're taking your life in your hands. So, like I said, I, I think that kind, if you're in the phase of your construction while you're doing this, you ought to consider doing that. And I'm, seems to me that that would prevent a lot of what Counsel Penta's concerned about, a lot of what the neighbors are concerned about right now, from actually happening. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Riordan, Counsel Grunasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. Certainly, I'm very mindful of this location, I've always paid attention to this, and I'm also very concerned about the sensitivity of those individuals who frequent this establishment and gain benefit from it. I don't want to deprive any individual from visiting a place of health and care by any means. By the same token, we have a obligation to the residents of our community, that the business community will join in harmony with them. They will be neighbors, they will sit in a setting that they're neighborly. Now, if we have very many neighbors that are upset and concerned about this location, we're not in the business of harassing you, or having you come up here frequently to address these issues. You're at odds, because you stated previously, when you reached the podium, as a, as a partner of this business, you live in Maryland. So you're dealing with hearsay somewhat. You're believing who's ever telling you this information, because you don't have firsthand information, because you're not here all the time. That's, that might be a concern, as to who your management is, and are they telling you the truth in terms of dealing with the neighbors. We understand you have a dual role here, that you have to be concerned primarily with your patients, and that is very important. I have tremendous regard for this gentleman right here. He does a great service for our community, he's a very conscientious police officer. But we're dealing also with additional lives that we're here to protect. I had this past weekend, disturbance of a gentleman's automobile alarm going off, he upset the whole neighborhood for two nights. Every 15 minutes, this alarm would go off. So it means everybody wakes up, and how do you go back to sleep? For two nights. I had very, very angry people come to me. So these are events that are brought to our attention to help them. We're in a position of help here. And so you help your patients, we have to help the concerned citizens of our city. And, and they've stated on many occasions, they're not abiding by it, to their agreement, they're not doing this, they're not doing that, they're being disturbed. Counsel Penta said it quite adequately, that, you know, when a constituent repeatedly calls you, and they're, they're at ends with, they're, they're, they're at the ends of their means there, they can't bear with it anymore, who else do they reach out to? And that's why you're here this evening. Is it premature? It probably is. And, and we did reluctantly agree, 11 to 0, to allow this to go forward. I'm fearful of the, and you said it was going to be the same amount of patients that are being received in there, when this is all built out. You might get more in there, and we'll have more vehicles coming there, and more disturbances to the neighborhood. I'm concerned about that. So, you know, in the back of my head, I remember, and this is before Paul, that when you had parties there on a Friday night, when everyone emptied out, and they decided it was a nice place, that I have a, I have a little party here. That's not what the facility is created for. That's a healthcare facility. I don't know of any facility that operates a business of health. And I'm in the healthcare business myself. We would never allow that to take place. So, I, I just don't know, and I think that the point is well made, it's a special permit, have it go through its process, and I think that in tabling this matter for additional processing, if needed, I think revocation to this evening would be probably premature. But I think what we're trying to do, we're reaching out to you, as a co-owner, caring for these individuals who have needs of their help, to help us, help our neighborhoods, and, and make it a safer and more enjoyable place to live, because they're frustrated. And I'm telling you, they've at the ends of their wits, and, and I don't blame them. Constantly be disturbed, you're supposed to rest when you're in your home. You know, you're supposed to have peace and quiet, and be able to enjoy a quality of life, not to be disturbed on a daily basis. And so, that's all I have to say, Mr. President, I just hope that this thing works out, and hopefully that you and your great attorney friend there, Mr. Attorney Sipoletta, I like to see you frequently in gym, but not here. And, and go forward, and please, try to help the neighborhood, because the neighborhood's crying out for help. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Counsel Grunasso, Counsel Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask, what is the, if you would please get up, what is, have you applied for a building permit as of right now? No?
Point of information, Counsel, they cannot, they do not have the special permit yet in hand. They can't apply for a building permit yet.
Okay. I'd like to find out why it takes so long to respond to these four, which I consider minor issues, that you've had for at least a month, and it was addressed even prior to that? Okay? I mean, they seem very simple to conform to.
I believe, I believe the one, if I may, that actually could be done now, or could have been done before this, would be that all owners, employees, delivery, drivers, patients, and so forth, shall use Revere Beach Parkway only, and at no time Mill Street to be used for gain or exit the property. I believe Vicki's made some efforts, a considerable effort to attempt to do that. The rest of these have to do with approval of plans stamped from the fire department, those are, those are underway. The designated fire lane, I think this all comes sort of at the end, when the, when the fire inspector and the department heads come down and they do their sign off.
Right. Well, you know, it's, we've been addressing this for a long period of time, you know, your facility there. I went by there last Thursday, and I noticed was a string of vans parked on Route 16, going westbound, okay? And that's not a safe, safety factor at all. They parked in the, no parking lane in front of the villa, okay? And I think that's going to be addressed there, because I'm surprised the state police haven't gone over there and start checking the vans, without question. So, you know, we want to work with you, we wanted to, we want you to be successful, but you need more hands-on experience to resolve these issues, okay? I don't know who you have as a management team, but I would reconsider looking at their duties to make sure they're really protecting your interests, because you are an outside, an absentee landlord, to speak of. So, you know, we want to give you a break, but we want a break for the neighborhood residents also. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Haas. Counsel Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Don't sit down. Mr. President, through you and the Honorable Attorney, and the owner, could you explain to me that once the appeal period is over, what happens next?
Once the appeal period is over, then they can apply for a building permit, but some of the things that need to be done, as part of the special permit conditions, have to be done before the building permit is applied for. Certain things need to, and they're listed in the, in the permit. So, in the ordinary course, if you were to get, if there were no conditions on the, on the grant of the special permit, then you could just go ahead, and in fact, if you were putting a second story on your house, or whatever, then on the 21st day, you get the certificate, and then you go and you record it, and you, you can go ahead and get your building permit. But this is a little different, because certain things are pointed out by virtue of the special permit conditions, that need to take place before the building permit can, can be issued. And then before you get a C of O, there are other things that are set out by the city council condition, conditions, that are enumerated here, like the fire lanes to sign off by the fire department, and then you'd need the rest of the building, the rest of the department heads to sign off. So in this case, it's a little more convoluted than the usual course of events.
Where is the handicap access into the building? Is that on the big parking lot area side?
So right now, it's on the back of the building. So it's not, it's on the other side, so Mill Street is on this side, the building is, I don't know how to explain to you, I have the, I have the drawing if I can show you.
With the 22 cars are parked?
Huh?
With the 22 cars are parked?
Yeah, with the, with the trash, yeah.
On the, on the western side of the building, we'll call that the west, right?
So there is actually going to be another handicap entrance, once we take over the other side. So we will have two handicapped entrances on the other side of the building. So we will no longer need to use Mill Street entrance at all. That's what our goal is.
Okay, that's number two. Number three, do you know whether or not there's a legal curb cut on Mill Street? I know it's open for traffic to go in there.
I don't know. I don't know.
Is there any way you can find that out from Public Works?
Probably DPW would have it.
Right, if you would. Okay. Because what, when I, you know, my suspicions are, it probably may be. But I kind of agree with Counsel Riordan about blocking off that side of Mill Street. Not necessarily by a fence, but I was even thinking of putting a curb cut, you know, closing the curb cut and putting granite curbing there, so nobody could drive into that side of the building. That was one of my, my thoughts. And I, I understand that Mill Street and almost every street in the city is a public street. You can tell people not to do anything regarding streets, and it's going to happen, just naturally. But I, I would think that if they knew that that entrance was totally blocked off, and they couldn't use it, they would be using the Parkway access more, realizing it as time went on. Now, do we know with all the complaints that have been going on, have there been any police reports written? I don't know. Okay. I know we were talking about parties going on at one point.
Four years ago, there was.
You know, several years ago, someone went in late at night and had some parties in there. Do we know if that's been going on still? We haven't had any complaints from any of the neighbors that I know of. I understand the process, you know, and did we jump the gun? I think we did jump the gun, and with all due respect to Counsel Penta and the neighbors, you know, a lot of this stuff could not happen overnight. And I understand that. And as, as Counsel Powers said, and Counsel Riordan said, I'm inclined not to pull this permit. Knowing the people that are involved, I still think you need time to do the construction, get everything finished, and understand that even in the interim, try and prep everybody for what's going on. Striping, you know, that, to me, that's a minor thing, that can be done anytime, that's not, that's not a major thing, but that even, that can't even be done until after the construction, it's going to ruin it afterwards. We don't know if you're going to repave the lot, we don't know- We don't know if you're going to coat the lot. So, and then you're going to have to do it again anyway. But I understand that's a money issue, and, you know, and a lot of people don't care whether or not you have to spend extra money. But I understand that striping is usually one of the last things that get done. And the other things are, one, two, and three are like, you know, the attorney said, those aren't something that could happen right away. But four, you're working on, and I understand that. And I am inclined to wait and see, you know, stretch it out some time, you know, whether it be six months or eight months. I don't know what your construction period's going to be. But in the meantime, you can still train your people to use that Parkway entrance. If you can't put curbing there now, put some kind of fencing there, even if it's portable for now, so people can't go in that way. Say, "Do not enter. Use Parkway entrance" on those temporary fences. You know, and I'm just trying to give you some ideas now to train these people on what to do. So, Mr. President, you know, if it does come to a vote, or whenever, maybe at this point, I would not, but again, as a couple of the other counselors said, to wait and see, and if after the construction is done, and it still goes on, I will be the one to vote on pulling it. So, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Mr. President, just a point of information.
Thank you. Counsel Penner, state your point.
Point of information is, the clerk has a date. I'd appreciate if she could say it, but she probably doesn't, when this was voted on last.
The special permit was granted on March 24th, 2014.
March 24th. How many weeks ago was that? Not three. Not three, not 21 days ago. Okay? Second of all, this does not affect one resident of that, a customer of the adult daycare center. This is an addition. So, we stood here, and we want to give them a month, two months, six months. The council said, "All I'm doing is trying to save the applicant a lot of money." Because evidently, they come up here and they issue the death, and they haven't done it once. As far as the trashes, I mentioned it up there every single time they've been up here. And that's on record. So, for her to say this is the first time she's heard it, that's incredible. So, you people, I mean, usually three strikes, you're out. We struck out three innings here, and we still want to give them a chance. That's up to you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to entertain a motion to table.
Calendar item number six, report of the zoning subcommittee.
Mr. Chairman Riordan.
Thank you, Mr. President. This afternoon, the zoning subcommittee met at approximately 5:25, considering petition C-14-04, which is a petition by the applicant, Singular Wireless PCS of Constituent Road in Framingham, seeking permission to modify an existing wireless facility by adding three panel antennas and additional network upgrades at 427 Squire Road, Revere, Mass. This is the four-point Sheraton, for those of you who are interested in knowing what that address is. The matter was considered by the zoning subcommittee, who voted, which voted unanimously to report it out favorably. The changes are very unadversive and affect only the facet of the penthouse there. So, that was reported out favorably by the, unanimously by the subcommittee. And I would request that the entire city council take a vote on that matter this evening.
Madam Clerk.
Shall the city council grant the relief requested for the premises located at 427 Squire Road? Counselor Rigo is absent. Counselor Genino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novosolsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Penner?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted. Calendar item number seven, report of the appointments subcommittee meeting.
Mr. Chairman Guanasso.
Mr. President, earlier today, the appointment subcommittee met, and we had the following individuals before us. The first was the reappointment of Thomas Abadi as an assistant habermaster. He will be attending our next meeting, we hope. And the next was the reappointment of Geo Search, Inc., 20 Authority Drive, Fitchbury, as a licensed drain layer. That was approved unanimously. Next was the reappointment of Menino Construction. They called earlier today, the city clerk, and asked that they meet at the next appointment subcommittee. And then we had the reappointment of J.J. O'Brien &amp; Sons, 5 Fern Street, Waldham, as a licensed drain layer. That was approved. The next appointment of Sean Farrell Escavating, Inc., as a licensed drain layer. That was placed on hold. Reappointment of C.R.L., Inc., 33A Mystic Avenue, Methford, as a licensed drain layer. That was approved. Appointment of Richard Petty, 35 Sound Street, Methford, to the Revere Resident Employment Committee. That was approved. Next was the appointment of Hemlick Landscaping &amp; Construction, 65 Burlington Street, Woburn, as a licensed drain layer. That was approved. Then we had appointment of J.A. Contracting Services, P.O. Box 6476, Chelsea, as a licensed drain layer. That was approved. Then we had Manola Construction Company as a licensed drain layer. That was approved. I asked if there's not any objections of the committee of the hall that we take these all at once and vote favorably, as mentioned. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel Novosolsky.
Mr. President, I have no problem with all of these. I just brought it up at the last meeting that J.A. Contracting Services did not have an up-to-date certificate of liability. And I don't mind voting on it tonight, but I would ask the clerk to get the updated certificate, and then once they bring that in, that she process the permit at that time.
I'm sure we can approve it, and she can hold the actual license until we have it in hand. Okay. Madam Clerk.
Shall the city council confirm the appointments as reported by Chairman Guanasso? Counselor Rigo is absent. Counselor Genino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novosolsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Penner?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed. Calendar item number nine, communication from the Department of Veteran Services relative to the installation of a memorial pole for Joseph Di Ambrosio, Army Technical Sergeant, Third Class, on Douglas Street at the corner of Temple Street.
Mr. President.
Counsel Novosolsky.
Mr. President, as the chairman of the Veterans Committee, I would hope that we approve this tonight, so we can get the Public Works moving on it, to have it up by Memorial Day. And I would, as a motion to put it on officially, I would also ask Counsel Guanasso, I guess he's the ward counselor, that he be added to the motion.
Thank you, Counsel Novosolsky. Counsel Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. I certainly think this is well-deserved. It was a terrific guy, well-loved by the neighbors, and we look forward to the dedication. Thank you.
Thank you. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed?
Calendar item number 10, communication from the mayor relative to habermaster reappointments, and the reappointment of Eugene McKenna to the planning board.
Appointments.
Calendar item number 14, communication from Rachel Damiano, 56 Geneva Street, Revere, Mass, requesting the abandonment of a certain portion of Italia Avenue.
Economic development and land seals? Oh, I'm sorry, to a public hearing.
Calendar item number 15, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Sikati &amp; Construction LLC, 145 Burl Street, Swampscott, Mass, as a licensed drain layer.
Appointments.
Calendar item number 19, motion presented by Counselor Genino, that the mayor requests the Traffic Commission to examine the feasibility of designating Sherman Street as a restricted street for heavy commercial vehicles under Schedule 6 of Title 10 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Revere.
Counsel Genino.
Thank you. This was an issue that came up recently. I've met with several of the residents in this area, and trucks are a huge issue for them. The bakery on the side is getting deliveries throughout the day, and they're also sending out deliveries throughout the day, which is causing a lot of problems for them in that neighborhood, as well as the Walgreens property. And it's a very small street. It's a very, very small street. There's a lot of cars parked on the side from Walgreens, so the trucks accessing that street is only creating a greater problem. So, I'd like the Traffic Commission to look at the feasibility of this, to see if it would be feasible, and if it would help relieve some of the concerns of the neighbors. And also, if Counselor Patch had anything to say, I would like to be added to this. I'd be happy to add you as a ward counselor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Genino. Counsel Patch, you want to add anything to this?
I think Counselor Genino said it all, and this, I know this has been a problem in the past, but since the bakery opened, it's got a little worse down there. Thank you, Mr. President.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number 20, motion presented by Counselor Patch, that the mayor requests the DPW superintendent and Robert Button of CDM to appear at the Public Works Subcommittee to address remediation of the drainage issues on Sherman Street, Orvis Road, and Carlson Avenue.
Counsel Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. This has been an ongoing problem for two or three years now on these streets. To start with Sherman Street, none of them, Sherman Street has no drainage at all, and as we know, it was supposed to, it was in the planning, it was supposed to, the water flow was supposed to go all the way down into the field in the back. Well, it doesn't. It stops in front of Mr. De Plachi's house, and what it's doing is it settles there, and it tears up his driveway, and it, you know, it's just, it's time that they remedy these problems. I mean, they've been a little bit, since the street was put in. On Orvis Road and Carlson, they have a similar problem. They have legal septic drainage going out to the street. And even during the winter, the smallest rainstorm, I get the call, I have to get, call the superintendent to have the streets sanded. And we've had pedestrians falling. The ice creates a problem. And on Orvis Road is a similar problem. Sherman, it has no drainage. Carlson does have some drainage, but the way the street is laid out, again, the water settles in a certain area, and it freezes. So, I think it's time we get together with everybody here. Now, CCGM, they want 15 million, I mean, it seems like every other month, so I hope we get these little, these little, these little problems are not little problems for people that live in these streets. So, I'd like to get this done. Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number 21, motion presented by counselors Patch and Genino, that the mayor requests the United States Postal Service to install a mailbox in the vicinity of Grover and Sagurny Streets.
Speaks for herself.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Patch. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number 22, motion presented by Counselor Patch, that the mayor requests National Grid to repair the trench on Sagurny Street. Further, that National Grid also be requested to redo the unacceptable repair job of the driveway base at 14 Sagurny Street. These work orders have been requested of National Grid several times, but the repairs have yet to be made.
Counsel Patch.
As the madam clerk stated, that this has been put in several times. And I went down there to look at myself, where they put the line in the street, where they put the line in the street. They also had to go to the house on 14, they had to go up to the house through the driveway. Am I all set here? Okay. Um, oh. What I was saying is, they put, they did a lousy job on the street, and they left, they left it like an inch above the street. But then they also had to go to the house on 14 Sagurny, right through the driveway, and they got two big holes that they dug there, that probably two inches off the driveway. I mean, it's unacceptable. I mean, it's, but you can't, National Grid, I'm still, I'm still waiting a month and a half to get a light fixed on Griswold Street. I don't think they've taken care of that yet. I had the clerk, again, email, Mr. Cameron. I mean, we got to get on them somehow to get these things done. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Patch. Counselor Genino.
Thank you. And speaking on this as a resident, not as a city counselor, to my ward counselor, who I want to thank a lot for putting this motion in, you know, this is a huge issue, and my neighbors on my street were greatly affected by this. If you drive by Sagurny Street, the trench is deep, it's noticeable, and the work was absolutely horrible. It was very, very poor. And speaking on behalf of my family who couldn't be here tonight, or of the owners of that property, it's awful. We have two speed bumps in our driveway, and it's just completely unacceptable. My grandfather spends hours maintaining our property and making sure it looks absolutely perfect. He seal-coated the driveway himself every year, so it's a slap in the face to the residents. And I know we're not the only home that's affected by this. There are several. And I think that Counselor Patch has made a great strive to begin to address the issue, which is a much larger one, of the really awful work that's being done by National Grid throughout our city. And you can see that there are several trenches of this. Ward 6 has been butchered, and we're one of the better paved wards in Revere, you know? There are streets that are significantly worse. So, I hope that this is brought up now, so that as new streets are being paved, this work is being done, because Sagurny Street was very new, and they completely ruined it. So, I hope that this brings attention to the matter, that streets, the work needs to be done before streets are paved, because the streets in Revere are very, very unacceptable as it is, and we can't make them worse after we've worked to make them better. So, thank you, Counselor Patch, on behalf of my family. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Counsel Genino. Counsel Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've spoken to Counselor Patch, and he's agreed to allow me to include Alden Avenue on his motion. It's, there's a trench there. It's been there for two months in front of someone's house. It's owned by National Grid. I mentioned it to Dan Cameron the last time I was up here. Nothing's happening. And I think Counsel Genino is 100% right. I had put in a motion about a year ago, that these, before they backfill these trenches, they have to make sure that it's suitable material, that it's compacted properly, and once it's patched, the patch is put on at the hot top, it's sealed, so the condensation doesn't get in here. And that's happening all over this city, and no one seems to be paying attention to it. Everybody's out there doing whatever they want with regard to trenches, and the city looks terrible. And it's, before you know it, we're going to have automobile accidents and lawsuits against the city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Powers. There is no question that some of these trenches are absolutely unacceptable, and they're going to need to come back and grind them and patch them properly with a proper seal. And so, I completely support the motion of Counsel Patch. As amended, motion, as amended, all in favor, all opposed? So voted.
We have a late communication from the mayor's office relative to ETP funding requests for four RHS scholarships.
That goes to Ways and Means?
Mr. President.
Counsel Penner.
I see that as a late communication. The only problem, I mean, it's ETP funds going to scholarships, which we don't meet for another two weeks, and I'm not sure if it's going to stop.
Okay.
Yeah, but you have to fund it, and other than that, I don't think.
What's the will of the council?
Take a vote on it.
Take a vote? We should move to Ways and Means.
Okay. We have a council that wants to move it to Ways and Means on the, we're going to take a vote on whether to move it to Ways and Means, and then if it fails, we'll take a vote to approve.
On the motion to move to Ways and Means, Counselor Rigo is absent. Counselor Genino? No. Counselor Guanasso?
No.
No. Counselor Haas?
No.
No. Counselor Morabito?
No.
No. Counselor Novosolsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Patch?
No.
Is, no? Counselor Riordan?
No.
No? And Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. The motion fails?
Okay. On the motion to approve the funding.
On the motion to approve the funding to a transfer from the ETP fund to the scholarships. Counselor Rigo is absent. Counselor Gino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Penta?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. The transfer has been approved.
No further business, a motion adjourned? Adjourned to June 2nd.